Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our regular meeting of July the 9th. I'll go ahead and call our meeting to order and ask Commissioner Lohhan if you would lead us in invocation and if you will stand with us for the pledge of allegiance.
If y'all would bow with me, please. Father, we come to you with thankful hearts, thankful for the day you've given us another day of life. Well, we thank you for the freedom that we just celebrated in our country and the blessings that we all received. Oh, we also ask that you would continue to be with the rescue teams that are rescuing the young soccer team players and your coach in Thailand. Just thank you for the ones that have been rescued and pray that the remaining would be safe. Just guide and direct us as we do the business of Stanley County and let us make wise decisions. These things I pray in Christ name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohhan. Everyone's got their agenda, had time to take a look at it. Is there any adjustments or approval for the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure this is... We have a substitute for number four on the economic... I'm looking at the wrong one. Livestock arena thing, so with that adjustment, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
Got a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Do I have a second? Motion by Vice Chairman Lohhan McIntyre, second by Commissioner Eifert. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item one, public hearing, economic incentive grant. Presenter Michael Smith, our EDC director. Good evening, Michael.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
I'm good. It's great to always see you here.
Thank you very much. Come before you tonight to request assistance on Project Steel. This project is an existing industry here in Stanley County now, but they are considering an expansion here and also looking very closely at three other states. We have the North Carolina Economic Development Partnership engaged on this for potential assistance from Raleigh. Over three years, this project would create 44 new full-time jobs. Over three years, they would invest 3.8 million in new taxable investment. Our request for support from the county would be 60 percent grant on the first two years of this investment, and then we would like to go to 75 percent on the additional investment for six more years. This would be a total of eight years for this competitive grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions from Michael from the board? We've got a hold of public hearing, so we'll do that. I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this economic incentive grant? Anyone here wishing to speak for or against? See none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board? Commissioner Lohhan?
I'll make a motion that we approve the property tax incentive as explained by Mr. Michael Smith, our EDC director.
Got a motion from Commissioner Lohan, second from Commissioner Swain. Any discussion? All in favor? No? Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Item two, contract award for in-room foreclosure on delinquent property taxes. Presenter Clinton Swearingen, our tax administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here tonight to get a contract award for in-room foreclosures on delinquent taxes that's owed to Stanley County and other 10 municipalities and the fire districts in our county. North Carolina General Statute 105-375 provides clarification and authority to impose in-room foreclosures to collect delinquent property taxes. That expected benefit to us is the increase in the collections by more efficiently processing these delinquent accounts. The people that we're going to foreclose on, we have tried everything we can legally try to collect this money to this point. We have garnished their wages if they work, we've attached their bank account if we can find it, we have applied to debt set-off to get their income tax return from the state, we've checked a sheet, we've done everything we can do. This is always our last route for collecting the taxes. Previously, we have been in a contract with Mr. Josh Morton of Morton &amp; Griffin Attorneys since March of 2015, and Mr. Morton recently resigned that position in late May of this year, 2018. I would like to keep this work local, like it has been, and so I've requested bids from all parties interested. I have in y'all's packet three of the bids that came in from Honeycutt Law, Brown, Brown &amp; Brown, Ms. Connie Josie, and then Mark Louder of MT Louder &amp; Associates. I also reached out to Mr. Clegg Mabry, who point-blank told me no. Crawford Rippey, who is also retired, I thought he might have time to work on it, he also said no. And Jim Phillips was also approached, and he never turned a bid in. Spoke to five attorneys in Stanley County, received bids from three of them. You have them in your packets. So my request to the board is to accept and approve one of these bids to process our in-room foreclosures. Mr. Honeycutt came in at the cheapest, at $235 per hour, and Ms. Josie was at $250 an hour plus a paralegal fee, and Mr. Mark Louder was at $250 an hour. So it would be my recommendation to the board that we select Honeycutt Law simply based on their cheaper and their extensive experience with Mr. Cameron Scott, who works with Mr. Honeycutt in his foreclosure dealings in Mecklenburg County. I think any of the three would do a fantastic job, but that's my recommendation. I also would like to thank Josh Morton for his work the past three years. I tallied up everything this morning, and in Josh's three years of work, we've collected $486,387.45, and we have paid them $13,017. So about 2 percent is how it cost us to collect that money. And the best news out of all of that is we haven't foreclosed on one person. We haven't had to sell it. So that's the best news, is a push comes to shove, they realize we're serious, that we're going to do this, they're ended up paying. So that's why I want to keep... We're moving in the right direction, and I want to keep moving in that direction to get these taxes paid. A lot of it is air property, where, you know, they might not be able to agree to sell that, and this sometimes helps motivate them to do that. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman McIntyre.
I like the fact that Mr. Honeycutt's firm have worked extensively in this, and I'd like to make a motion that we follow the recommendation of Mr. Swearingen in contract with them.
Got a motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre to use Honeycutt Law, and I've got a second from Commissioner Louder. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of questions. Clinton, currently, Mr. Morton, what is his hourly rate?
Well, he signed the contract three years ago, it was $200 an hour.
Okay. Then the second question, over the last, I think you said, last three years? How many properties have we started this foreclosure process on?
Properties that he actually has touched doing title work and sending letters, it was 62. There's probably another 15 that we have collected money on just from a one-time letter from Josh, and he didn't charge us anything for just sending that letter. So he typically only sends... He only billed us if he did title work and actually had some time involved in it, so...
And I guess the last question, in the past, Josh probably has given you itemized bills, is that correct?
He has.
And going forward, Mr. Honeycutt or his associate would be expected to...
Yeah, we would follow the same contract. All of the attorneys that submitted bids, and even the ones that I approached that didn't want to do the work, I gave them a copy of the contract that we have with Josh, because we would want to keep that same type of contract, and they were all fine with it. It's our typical less than $10,000 contract per year.
One last question. I'm sorry, I do have one.
No, that's fine.
What is the term of the contract?
Just one year.
And is there a way to get out of it if we're not satisfied?
Thirty days, we can notify him, or he can notify us, which is what Mr. Morton did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohan, for those questions. I had some same questions in my mind. Any other comments? Questions? What's the pleasure of the board? Oh, I'm sorry, I've got a motion and a second, my apologies. I've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Clinton. Item three, a resolution of the Stanley County Board of Commissioners in support of Stanley County, better utilizing investments to leverage development, build application. Presenter Andy Lucas, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, Candace Mopff is here this evening. Dana Stojcik has been assistant with Candace and people on the board. You and Dana have been more involved in the process than I have. Maybe just convention in the aisle. Answer any questions.
Sure. Thank you for allowing us to come before you tonight in consideration of this resolution. North Carolina Department of Transportation, Multi-Modal, Secretary for Multi-Modal Transportation, met with the RPO and several community partners about a month ago, and she saw a real opportunity in our county and the city of Albemarle. We have great partners, strong partners. We all feel very strongly that there are some opportunities coming down the line, and in the spirit of planning ahead, instead of having to be reactive, she initiated a conversation about a build grant. We're asking for support, a resolution to support the build grant application. We're requesting $400,000 for which there is no local match required, and the $400,000 will be a planning grant only. There will be an opportunity later to apply for implementation funds, which for rural communities, there's also a zero local match for the implementation phase. $400,000 is estimated to be broken down, and I apologize, I just received this from DOT very late this afternoon, for non-motorized transportation opportunities, including an area greenway study, bike facilities, pedestrian sidewalk assessment and drainage assessment in the city of Albemarle, $90,000 to $110,000. For the community transit system, which is where I come into play, be a transit study, including the deviated route that we've already considered, and a fixed route connecting the Pfeiffer main Meisenheimer campus to the downtown future location, $75,000 to $100,000 for that study. Broadband and Wi-Fi, we need some infrastructure improvements that we cannot rely on from the private sector, so that phase of the study will be $60,000 to $125,000. And then communications and public outreach, including stakeholding groups and public hearings, at $35,000 to $50,000. So the final total for those cost estimates was $300,000 to $425,000. Again, this is just for the planning phase. I'll take any questions you may have. That was just a very quick glimpse. I've got more details if you want, I can dig through this.
Thank you, Candace. Any questions from the board?
I guess I've got one. Where did we, I guess, hear about this grant, or how did this come about?
The program's actually has a new name, it's Build. It comes down from the federal government, there are federal funds that are available. If you're familiar with the old Tiger grant, that used to be available for capital improvements, this is a new version of that similar program. It's a national program, competitive projects will be coming in from all over the country. Planning grants and implementation grants are available. We didn't feel that the project would be strong enough from a transit perspective to do a standalone application for our deviated and proposed fixed routes connecting Meisenheimer and Albemarle, and there were several things we needed to look at for safety, ADA, compliance and all of that, and that rolled into, you know, as things go, a much larger conversation. So we felt that the best first step would be a planning grant. The state did fund a cost-benefit analysis, and I also received that very late today, and the benefit, it was a 1.25 to 1, you know, benefit to cost ratio over 30 years.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I don't really have a question, I've just got a statement. This did just come out late, because Dana just brought it up at our last RPO meeting to request application, so it's, I don't know why it's so expedited, but it did come down from the federal government late, and the application deadline is moving forward.
July 18.
Yeah, so we just learned about it at the last RPO meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Eifert.
I make a motion we adopt the build planning grant application resolution.
Got a motion from Commissioner Eifert, second from Commissioner Swain. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Candace. Item four, livestock arena, general contractor contract approval and budget amendment. Presenter Andy Lucas.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Actually, this is a substitute, so we'll have the general contractor bid review and propose next steps. We bid this project earlier today. There were four general contractors who submitted bids. The bids came in, they exceeded the anticipated budget for the project, and as such, the board's asked to review these, and we're asking you to direct staff and our contract architect, spinnicle architecture, to negotiate and further cost engineer this project with our lowest responsive bidder, which in this case is SimCon, which SimCon is based in Mount To date, a total of 1.1 million has been pledged from non-county sources. Of this total, 536,394 has been paid. 175 of that 536 has been recognized by the board, so you've got about 361,000 that could immediately be appropriated, but at this point in time, I'm not recommending that because we don't need to. And then there's an additional 573,000, almost 574,000 in non-county funds that have been committed but remain outstanding, and obviously those could be recognized at a later date. At this point in time, given the lowest bid is 3.4, almost 3.5 million, when we anticipated this project being closer to 2 to 2.5 million, I think the best course of action is to have us negotiate with the lowest responsive bidder and to try to cost engineer this project and bring something back to you in August 6th at your meeting, and we may at that time recommend that, you know, we just, that the project be put on hold, or we could recommend that the board move forward. At this point, your options are either to basically put the project on hold and not do the project and/or negotiate with the lowest responsive bidder. Because it was a public bid process, you have to, you have to work with the lowest responsive bidder and/or just not do the project. I think at this point, you know, we should try to see if what we can do in terms of cost engineering and working with the lowest responsive bidder to potentially bring that project down to a number that may be manageable and this board could support. And like I say, that give us till the August 6th meeting to try to do that, and if at that time the board doesn't feel like we just, that the project's feasible based on, you know, the amount of money the county would have to come up with, that we would, you know, put the project on hold, or just say we want to completely re-engineer the project. The issue you have really is, though, the project is pretty simple. It's a metal building with two bathrooms and a concession stand and ticket office. I mean, there's just, the metal building, the structure itself, and the cost of the site prep are really what's driving this project, and so the bids are due, are good for 60 days. So, you know, the only concern I have is if we extend this project out, if we say we're not going to do it, but we're going to have the architect go back and redesign it and rebid it, that the cost of steel's just going to continue to escalate, and the cost of construction's going to continue to escalate, and, you know, six months, a year from now, we're in a situation where, you know, what was 3.4 could end up being 4 now. Flip side of that, the economy could stagnate and go backwards, and you may get better prices a year from now. It's just one of those... But I will say that, you know, it doesn't appear that's the case, and everything we see in the economy is it continuing to grow, and it's continuing to get harder and harder. So anyway, that's our recommendation, is to try to negotiate and cost engineer on the project, get it lower, and bring something back to you, and that may be bringing something back to you to say, we can't recommend this project at this point just based on the amount of money, and then it would be up to you all to make that decision. But I don't feel comfortable right now asking you to execute a contract based on 3.4 million, almost $3.5 million bid price. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question. I'm not real sure what the number of days listed, is that the number of days they will take to complete construction?
That's correct. That's the number of days they're proposing to complete construction, so two of the companies had 365 days and two had 300 days. Your will.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Swain.
Mr. County Manager, would the negotiations include any of the end-users from the Ag Center or that committee to kind of make suggestions for things, changes that could be made?
Yeah, I would certainly engage that advisory group that's been working with us all along, because I think there's things within the project that they are aware of that we could take out or we could do without. So yes, certainly would be engaging that group, because they know more about, you know, the end-users, the folks in the, you know, the cattle showing and on the ag side that would say, hey, we don't need this. This is not, this isn't not, it's nice to have, but we don't need it. Yeah, definitely.
Areas that we could deviate, but possibly areas that they wouldn't want to.
Right. I mean, one of the things, you know, you could say, well, it's not going to be 150 by 200. Well, if you make it smaller than that, it really creates a problem with, in terms of your end-users and what kind of revenue you could potentially get, and who would use the facility. So, you know, it's things like that where you probably can't deviate much in terms of the size of it, but you may be able to reduce the amount of seating, you may be able to... There's quite a bit of curb and gutter in it that we don't necessarily need, we don't have any curb and gutter anywhere else out there on the side of the Aggris Civic Center. So things like that, there's some asphalt that could be taken out. My understanding is there's some structural things that could be done to decrease the price, and just having conversations with the architect and the GC. So I do believe there's opportunities, I'm just not sure we're going to get to, still going to get to a good number that you all are going to feel comfortable with, but it's at least worth a shot to see what we can come up with.
Sure. Any other comments or questions?
Originally, we thought...
I think originally, we thought it would be somewhere in the 1.75 to 2 million, and I think over the last, you know, six months to a year, I think there'd been some thought that it would be, could exceed 2 million, but I certainly wasn't anticipating it was going to be 3.4. You know, the bids range from 3.4 to 3.8, almost 3.9, so it's just a, I mean, it's a good that our economy is this good right now, that there's this much, that the prices are as high as they are, that's good from an economic perspective, it's not good from an entity trying to build something perspective.
One more question. All of these subs down at the bottom, is who these companies use?
Yeah, that's who they got their bids from. I mean, they could go back to those folks or go to something, you know, SimCon could go to someone else and say, hey, you know, let me see, I got your electrical quote. They could go to someone else and say, can I get some, you know, so they could go with somebody different in terms of who SimCon chose from their subs, and try to put pressure on them or find someone else that could lower their price.
Are these subs local?
For SimCon, two of them are, yes. Your plumbing and your HVAC are local. I'm not familiar with the electrical or the site.
Commissioner Morgan.
I'm Matt, what for Andy, are they the people that raised lots of funds in the... Or have they stopped raising money?
They haven't stopped raising money, and my understanding is that, you know, that they are, there's potentially 250 to 500,000 that could still, that's still out there if they shook a few trees, and so I think one of the things I'll be saying to this group as I'm working with them on, you know, potentially cost engineering, is also, if you want this thing to happen, you need to find that half a million dollars, because the board's going to have a really difficult time doing this even if it's at 3 million, because that's still a $2 million gap, and that's a pretty substantial number when you think about schools and EMS and the radio tower and Riverstone with Economic Development. There's just a lot of other things in terms of priorities or broadband that the, you know, the school system's coming to talk with us about and a commitment there. So there's a lot of things that the board's prioritizing, so, you know, I had this conversation with some of those members of that advisory committee earlier today, is that, you know, even at $2 million, that's going to be a difficult, that's going to be difficult for the commissioners to swallow, given all the other priorities in the community, and so, you know, you all need to, you all need to get moving on trying to secure some additional commitments. I hope that answers your question.
I guess my thoughts on that are, I was not expecting to see a number starting with a three at all, and it's just a little bit frustrating, because I know how important this is to a lot of folks, and certainly I would like to see it come to fruition, but I don't know, starting out at a 3.4, basically 3.5 number, it's going to be tough to get that number down.
Do we need a motion on this, or just direct staff?
Yeah, you'd need a motion to direct staff to negotiate and cost engineer the project and bring it back to you on the August 6th meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion to direct staff to work with our architect to try to get the price down. We have a second. Second from Commissioner Lohan. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Item five, selection of a voting delegate for the 2018 North Carolina Association and County Commissioners Annual Conference. Presenter Andy Lucas, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You've got the email attachment. Basically, this is the annual conference for the association, and on that Saturday, they hold a business meeting, and they're just asking for a voting delegate from the county be assigned to attend that voting, or attend that meeting and vote on the county's behalf. And that is Saturday, August 25th, from 3:00 to 4:30, and this meeting will be in Hickory at their convention center there, just off of I-40. We have heard answer any questions.
Any comments from the board? Anyone jumping at the chance to be our volunteer?
Peruse my calendar to see how that might work out. I enjoy going to that, I've been several times, but I can make a decision in the next few days, I can't make one tonight.
I will, I will be glad to try to, try to make it. I don't know if, maybe if the board wants to see if... We do have some time to make this decision, so we can table it if everyone would like to for the next meeting.
Make a motion to table the next meeting.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries, seven to zero. We'll table that till August, August 6th. Item six, Region F Aging Advisory Committee Appointments. Presenter Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have the information in your packet, they're seeking to reappoint Ms. Janice Abernathy as a delegate for a two-year term beginning this July, appointing one additional delegate for a two-year term beginning this July. and appointing one additional delegate for a two-year term beginning this July and appointing an alternate to serve a one-year term beginning this July. You have Ms. Abernathy's information, and then there's, you can kind of see the members of that board that are there currently and their roles and responsibilities. Unfortunately, I don't think we have, other than Ms. Abernathy, I don't think we have necessarily a name provided. And I have to defer to the clerk, but I don't believe there are any other recommendations or applications at this time. So, you may just want to...
Should we just...
...Mernathy and hold off on the other two and table them.
Should we just table this all together?
I think we go ahead and appoint Ms. Abernathy to serve the delegate. She's now an alternate, and then we'll just find an alternate. Okay. I'll make that motion.
Got a motion to appoint Ms. Abernathy and to the, reappoint her as a delegate for a two-year term beginning July first, 2018 through June thirtieth, 2020. Got a, and that includes table the other ones. I've got a motion to appoint Ms. Abernathy and to table the other appointments till the next meeting. And a second from Commissioner Louder. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I had to have a question for County Manager. Do we advertise on our website or anything some of these appointments or boards that's needing spaces? I know there's a place if you want to be on a board, just go down there. Do we do anything as far as advertising?
No, I'd have to say we don't necessarily do anything actively to advertise. I mean, just sort of word of mouth and the information's out there. But we certainly, you know, staff could, you know, post something on the website. As also, we can use social media to try to get the word out about opportunities to participate in these different boards and commissions. So, you know...
I'd like to see that on either, you got an employment opportunity, maybe somewhere in there and just say... All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We can elevate that.
Any other discussion? Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Item seven, Stanley County Farm Services Agency Committee Nominations. Presenter Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, you have this information before you. Seeking to find nominees for Almond, Indy and Fur Townships that would fit within the Farm Service Agency for their local administrative area. And so, they're just looking for nominations. This doesn't necessarily mean they would be accepted, but it's just seeking some nominations from that area to serve on that local administrative area board.
Do we know who is on there now?
Madam Clerk, do we know? I don't believe we do because we don't manage that. That's managed by the Farm Services Agency.
I've got a nominee, individual would be Robbie Honeycutt. Robbie is in his mid-to-late thirties. He'd be the son of Rod Honeycutt, be the nephew of our current clerk of court, Michael Honeycutt. He lives in the Edge of Almond precinct. I have no idea if he'd be willing to do it, but we can give him the news that he's been volunteered.
You can nominate one.
We've got the name of Robbie Honeycutt, Chris Fur. Any other ones? Not sure who would be willing.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to correct my statement just so it's not misconstrued. I cannot participate in F S A programs because I don't have the qualified acreage.
Thank you, Commissioner Swain. Would the board like to make a motion to send those names as nominations?
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. All right, consent agenda. Notice we had some minutes that were revised that were sent to us today. So, if anyone saw those corrections, what is the closure to board on the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with those adjustments.
Got a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Got a motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre, second from Commissioner Efer. All in favor? Public comment. We've got one gentleman that has signed up. I'll introduce him now. He is currently our Assistant District Attorney, and his name is Ty Bang. Ty's got an announcement for us. Ty, if you'll come on up to the front here and we'll give you a few minutes to tell us what you're up to.
Thank you, Chairman Burleson and distinguished members of the board. I come here tonight to formally announce my candidacy for District Court Judge. It is a newly created seat when Stanley County and Montgomery County was merged into one single judicial and prosecutorial district under House Bill seven-seventeen. I came here tonight to tell you a little bit about myself and ask for your support and your vote this November. I am a lifelong resident of Montgomery County. I grew up there. I went to elementary school, middle school, graduated from West Montgomery in nineteen ninety-eight. I received my undergraduate degree and received a Bachelor of Arts degree in English from the George Washington University in two thousand and one. Received my Juris Doctorate from North Carolina Central School of Law in two thousand and five. Shortly after being admitted to the bar, I went into private practice and worked out of Spartanburg, South Carolina for a civil, for a civil firm. I represented clients both in federal and state courts. I've argued cases on appeal before the Full Industrial Commission. In two thousand and eight, after I married my wife, we decided we wanted to start a family. We decided there was no greater place than to come back home, and that's exactly what we did. We came back. My family, my parents own a chicken farm there in Troy. They were aging. Their health was declining. We decided to buy them out, and I took a position with the District Attorney's Office. I've been with this District Attorney's Office since two thousand and eight. I'm currently the Chief Assistant to Mr. Lynn Clodfelter. That's my responsibilities. I manage the Assistant District Attorneys in the office. I'm also the liaison for the multiple law enforcement agencies that we have here in the county as well as state and federal authorities. Now, the reason why I want to become District Court Judge is because I believe that there are good people in this community. I want to do great things for it. I want to be part of it, and that's the reason why my wife and I came back. We want to give back to the community. We want to see it do great things. We want to raise our children here. I live here. We worship here. We're part of this community. We're deeply rooted. And not only that, but we understand what life is like here. We have a working farm. My wife and I are the sole workers of that farm in addition to my duties here at the District Attorney's Office. We know life is hard. There are honest, hard-working people here, and sometimes they just need a break. Sometimes they need to be punished, and that's what I intend to do. If I am lucky enough to be, to be elected this November to be District Attorney or to be your District Court Judge, I vow to keep up that hard work. One of the main concerns that we encountered and talks about merging this district was the lack of accessibility to a District Court Judge after hours. One of the things that Lynn and I are very proud of in our office is the fact that we are accessible to our law enforcement officers after five o'clock. We know crime doesn't happen between nine and five, and we shouldn't stop working when that five o'clock bell hits. And so, I've been called on Christmas Day. I've been called on Christmas Eve. And just this year, I was called the day after. We get, my wife gave birth to our fourth, to our fourth child. And so, I had to meet law enforcement out, out there in Troy to help them with the search warrant. So, as you're a District Court Judge, that's what I strive to do, is be accessible to the community, be accessible to the attorneys and be accessible to our law enforcement agency because time is of the essence when it comes to serious cases. I look forward to your support. I look forward to meeting each and every one of you, and I hope that you'll vote for me in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Ty. Appreciate that. Any, that's the only one that I had sign up on our list. Is there anyone else out there wishing to speak? See none, we'll do board comments. Commissioner Lohan?
Give you a little information that was shared with me about home building permits. June of two thousand and eighteen, there were twenty permits issued for a value of three-point-two million dollars. Two thousand and seventeen, same month, June, twenty permits, a value of three-point-five-eight-one million. What's interesting is the permits from January through June of two thousand and eighteen totaled a hundred-and-thirty-six, which is down one permit from the previous year. But what's really interesting is the average home value jumped from a hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars to a hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-one dollars, which means there's more expensive houses being built this year than there were last year, which is good, good from a tax standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohan. Vice Chairman McIntyre?
No comments, sir.
Commissioner Louder? Commissioner Efer? Commissioner Swain? Mr. Morgan, do you have anything? I just hope everyone had a great Fourth of July, and it was great to celebrate the Fourth and glad to get some rest and relaxation. Guess we need to go back into closed session, so I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to consult with Attorney in accordance with General Statute one forty-three dash three-eighteen A three.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.